I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principle of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've got to be careful with your slide two.
Oh, I know, yeah.
The roll, please.
Vaughn.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Marquese.
Here.
Kenny. Clistic.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Six present.
We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is question, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience want to address the council? It doesn't have to be on an item that's on the agenda this evening, but if you'd like to come up and speak to us, please do.
I do.
Okay.
Good evening.
Please tell us who you are.
I am Chuck Fisher. I've lived here for thirty years.
Where do you live?
In Darien.
Yes. Okay, but do you have an address?
I do.
Could we have it?
No. It's not necessary.
No, it's not necessary.
Okay.
Um, I'm sad to do this, but I feel nevertheless somebody must. And it has to do with the city of Darien apparently opening their arms again to a large trucking industry coming into town. I did attend a zoning and planning committee meeting, and it was the epitome of a disappointment, and for this reason. All of them supported it even after some discussion on my part about noise pollution, air pollution, congestion, safety to the public. Everybody voted for the thing.
Mr. Fisher, where is this trucking facility?
The facility that we're talking about is going to be a property purchased by Sterling Bay.
That's a distribution center.
That is.
That's a building, yes.
It will be.
Okay.
A project, according to my review of their literature, tens of millions of dollars, they're going to put a building with thirty-one trucking bays. Does anybody know about this?
Sir, don't you live in Willowbrook?
What motivated that question?
Because I'm just asking a question.
No, no, I asked you what motivated your question.
Because you were at the meeting and you said you live in Darien. I want to just get for clarification, do you live in Willowbrook?
I do not live in Willowbrook. I already told you where I lived.
Do you live in Incorporated?
I'm not going there. We're not, if you don't want me to talk, I'll leave.
No, I'm just asking a question, sir.
I'm not going to answer your question. I am obligated to tell you where I live. I already told you where I lived.
Okay. You live in Darien.
You're getting me mad for no reason.
I'm just asking a question.
You don't have a right to ask me where I live.
Yes, we do, sir.
I already told you where I live.
Sir, we do have a right to ask you. We've had meetings, numerous meetings, with people that say they're in Darien.
If I lived in Willowbrook, would you not let me speak?
No, we can speak. We just want to know, open an honest answer.
Fine, then that point is moot, right?
Okay. I guess it's, we're asking a question where you live at. I'm asking.
I already told you.
Okay. But that's not what you said at the last meeting.
That's not true.
Mayor, this item isn't up for discussions for municipal services till end of the month, so just as information.
Right. He's right.
That's correct, and, yeah.
But I want to, I want, I live here, and you live here, and the motivation for my being here is I love living here, as I'm sure all of you do. I guess the law required them to post a sign on the property at Cass Avenue and Frontage Road, which was done. But who goes there? That's why I asked if anybody knew about this project, or tentative project. I'm curious, who did not know?
Sir, we do get the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so.
I didn't see them on the net yet.
They weren't public hearing, right? Public hearing, because we put those out on Direct Connect, too. All of our public hearings, we announce on Direct Connect.
We have several media portals.
Oh, anyway, I didn't see it, so if everybody read that.
Why Direct Connect?
I really, I don't remember where I looked for it. I looked the other day, and I didn't see it. In any event, I don't want to be, take up much time, but in a nutshell, thirty-one trucking bays to accommodate semi-trucks. That may not seem like a lot. I don't know what you know. And part of why I'm here is I want to encourage you, I think it's a requirement, and by the committee also you made reference to, to do some homework, because at zoning and planning, nobody did any homework. There was no discussion, they should have environment, invent, invited an environmental scientist, or even someone that could speak with authority about the air pollution and the noise pollution and the congestion this town will experience as a result of a facility that size. Couple of years ago, three years ago exactly, I got involved again when they were going to put a different trucking facility there with twenty bays. Guys remember that if you were here. That trucking company said that they would be putting in and out of the community two-hundred-and-forty trucks a day. If you get your calculator out, it's almost eighty-five thousand trucks a year. Maybe that doesn't matter, but I think it does. I think if something like that is allowed to occur in this community, it's going to be a suicide by this community. If you do some homework, and the committee you made reference to does some homework because the zoning didn't.
The zoning gets copious notes on what is being presented, so please don't assume they didn't know what they were talking about.
I don't presume anything. I was there.
You just said they didn't know what they were talking about.
When they voted to give a, when they voted to give a variance on the height of a building, and they did it, in contrary to all their rules. All the rules say if it does more harm to the community, if it doesn't do a positive thing, I have them here, but you guys know them. Every one of them. I think, most of them, they were violating the ordinances. But in any event, if you want me to cite them, I will. So when I say they don't know what they're talking about, I mean that when you invite eighty thousand trucks, or twenty thousand trucks, semi-trucks into the community, changes everything. The gentleman from the company that wanted to come in here said, "Well, we assume most of the guys will come off on fifty-five and go to Frontage Road and go in." I appeal to you, what your mothers taught us, use common sense. Eighty thousand trucks are not going to go that way. If ten percent of those trucks come off of three fifty-five, in the course of a year, Seventy-Fifth Street will see eight thousand trucks. Doesn't seem like a bad deal, but it is a bad deal because one truck of that size emits as much pollution to the air as a hundred-and-twenty-five cars.
Well, no, sir, I, the problem is that we have a limitation of three minutes of speaking on issues.
Oh, okay, you should have told me that. I would have been a lot faster.
No, this, we appreciate your comments, but I think it might be.
I'm here because I think that you guys are close to, because zoning did it. And when I said they didn't know what they were doing, I'm suggesting to you they had no knowledge of air pollution, noise pollution, and no idea how it was going to affect the police department. But in any event, you've got to do some homework. It's all on the Internet. Studies have been done, what the impact of a facility like this is on a town this size, research is there. Okay? It's there. There's nothing positive about it. It's all bad. These trucks will go by, they'll come on eighty-three, they'll go by Hinsdale Central. They'll come on Seventy-Fifth Street, they'll go by Eisenhower, they'll go by Lace, they'll turn down Cass, they'll destroy that church. That church, this is a seven-day, twenty-four operation, twenty-four-hour operation, the people who live over there will have to get earplugs. It's unbelievable what a truck generates noise-wise. You have to Google it. Don't believe me, I'm not a scientist.
Okay. I really need to have you curtail your comments, but we do appreciate your comments.
Appreciate it.
I think, I think you'll be able to follow this issue because it's not complete, and.
I understand that. But I'm here because, three years ago, it came to your attention, a similar kind of facility, smaller, and you guys didn't do your homework. So when I say that, I mean that you have to know and understand.
What he's talking about, the CR England, the CR England thing he was talking about.
Thermo King, I think it was.
Yeah.
Trucks are bad news. If you don't believe me, go to Forty-seventh and Central, Seventy-ninth and Harlem. I used to be in the business. They cause, actually, the Attorney General of the United States says that a facility like that, in a community like this, a noise pollution alone is hazardous to your health. I don't have the time to explain it to you. I only suggest that you research it yourself and don't kill the community.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question?
Just, just a quick comment. I believe that Dan has communicated with it because the Argonne National Labs Director has contacted me, and people from that area have contacted me, so I think that we've been communicating what's going on.
Well, at the meeting of the zoning and planning, there were four citizens and maybe ten representatives from Sterling. And Sterling is a slick, big operation. They have the potential to snowball you. Again, Google them. It's the same place that put McDonald's out of Oak Brook into Carpool Studios in Chicago. So that's a big, big thing, and I'm just a little old guy.
Thank you.
Anybody have a question?
Thank you for your comments.
I'm serious, nobody has a question? Hey, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think just to clarify, you know, the Planning, Zoning Commission are the volunteers of the community, and they're doing exactly what they are supposed to do, and the council's doing exactly what they're supposed to do. Let them do their work. And again, just for people at home watching this, if it's following the same procedure all of our other developments follow, if they require variance or they require things. So our, the citizens on that, and Dan could speak better to it than me, do a lot of their homework. You know, they really work hard on that committee. Treasurer Corrigan used to be on the Plan Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, so they do, they do a good job, and again, in this case and others, doing exactly what they should do.
Thank you. Did anyone else in the audience want to address the council? We have some visitors back there. I'm suspecting it's a student that is doing a project for school. Did you want, do you want to come up and tell us what your, what your, your project is? Come on up to the microphone.
Is it coming on this?
Hi, I'm.
Do you want to move the microphone down, so, there you go.
Hi, I'm Ben Carter, and I'm a Boy Scout here for a requirement for, I need to attend a city council meeting, and I need an issue, and I need to be able to explain it in a way where people can understand it.
Well, hopefully we'll give you some issues to be able to explain tonight.
You might have just heard.
You have one already.
Yes. So, Ben Carter?
Yeah.
That's you, okay. So what, what Boy Scout troop are you with?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six? Okay. Is that, is that in Darien? Is that a troop in Darien?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's run out of yard middle.
Oh, okay. Well, welcome. So, take good notes.
Thanks.
And if you do need help on an issue, this is our city administrator, Brian Vanna. He'd be, you'd be, he'd be happy to, or even I would be happy to answer any questions that you have after you see this meeting tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I shall, ma'am.
Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of July sixteenth. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any additions or deletions to the, for the minutes? Then the roll, please.
Vaughn.
Here. Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Marquese.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the Aldermen have communications to share? I think Alderman Vaughn has, has a communication to share this evening.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is in regards to the residents of Maple Lane in Ward Two. They're having issues with their garbage placement, because they, garbage can placement. So because they live in, live in Rais Ranches, they're unable to put their garbage on the side of their homes, so they have to put them in the front of their homes. So, some of these residents have received, I've received frustrating calls from residents that have received tickets for non-compliance. Some of them have complied within the past week. And to me, it's clear that there's an ongoing issue with the garbage placement due to the phone calls that I'm getting, emails that I'm getting, so I'm proposing that we make an amendment to the existing statute to exempt certain properties, like the Rais Ranch properties, that are unable to put their garbage cans on the side of their homes, but they do have storage places in front where they can barricade them with a blockade or something. But it, my proposal is to make an exemption for that particular type of home, so.
He's talking about the Rais Ranches in Hinsbrook. If you can picture them, it's the one with the staircase up to the front door.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's the units he's talking about. Okay. So I guess what we should do is send this to committee for discussion?
Yes. I do have some verbiage that I put together for the committee that they can review and make a decision on that, but, yeah.
Municipal services.
Municipal services, okay. And, and then we'll invite, we'll invite the, pardon me?
I was just thinking, with the policy change.
I was trying to send it to admin committee.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. We'll send it to committee, we have, and if you have the names of residents that have contacted you, once we set the date for the meeting at Municipal Services, we need to contact those residents so they can attend. And I recommended that. We get photos of these homes so that people can visualize.
Yeah, I couldn't visualize, too, because each house has a side, so I guess I don't understand why they can't put it.
I do have photos, but for the sake of time, I probably can't show them. But also, the argument was that the ordinance was passed way before these homes were built. You know, so nineteen seventy-five, I think they were, this.
I don't, I don't know if that's true.
It's a combination, it's a combination of, Mayor, and again, I think the whole ordinance needs to be revisited. There are situations, whether it's in Brookhaven and Hinsbrook, where you put these cans on the side, if you put the cans, for example, along the side of your driveway, your vehicle will not be able to properly maneuver against them. So that's one example that I've seen over the years. I know that we've been, more recently, the ranch house that Alderman Lester is referring to is, the landscaping is basically surrounded by the house on both sides with the ranch down, and there's nowhere where these garbage cans can be placed except for the inside of the garage. And in this particular case, what they did is they provided some panels. So the panels meet the spirit of the code from the, you know, that you don't see them. You know, from a technical standpoint, I guess it could be argued, but again, just to expound on Lester's comments.
You know, it's, it's a mystery to me, because frankly, I would think everyone keeps their garbage, recycling garbage cans in their garage, and only bring them out on the day that their, their pickup is. So this is, this is strange to me that people would leave their garbage cans on, even on the side of their homes, but, yeah, I.
Well, some are saying that it could be, could cause health issues, because some of the garages are, they have, what do you call it? Ventilation that could cause, you know, health problems that could go inside the house, so some of them leave it outside of the house to prevent that.
Well, I think it's worthy, I think it's worthy of sending to committee to discuss, so. And then Alderman Vaughn, you know, when, when you guys make the, the date for that, that meeting, let, let your residents know that have contacted you.
Are they far enough in a property line for those, like, fifty-dollar sheds at Minarge or Lowe's, where, you know, you just put right against the side of the house, and you just roll it into the shed and close it?
It's an accessory structure, and you can't have the accessory structure up against the house. So that becomes another issue in itself.
And then they're on an incline like that, so it's probably not possible.
Yeah, those properties, exactly what you're saying, they're different than, you know, the normal two-story, whatever. Their, their terrain of their house is really hilly along the sides. They are constructed a little bit differently, and a lot of them have heavy landscaping around the sides, but if you were to, on, on those types of homes, if you were to store a garbage can on your side yard, it's pretty much on a hill.
Ah, okay.
It is, it is a little problematic from that standpoint. I could see that.
Okay. So thanks for bringing the issue forward, so we'll get that on an agenda. When's, when's the next Municipal Services meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. August twenty-seventh.
Okay, so you can, can you, have you, are you able to get it on the agenda for that meeting?
You'll probably get it on the agenda, just, just for general discussion with no decision.
No decisions?
Yes.
Dan, two weeks or three weeks? Your normal meeting would be.
Three weeks, I'm sorry, three weeks.
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, three weeks. I'm thinking city council meeting.
All right, so we'll add, so let your residents know, it's August twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
August twenty-seventh, okay. Thank you. Any other communications to share? Alderman Clistic?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick thank you to Mr. Jerry Legansky for putting together the, the party a few weeks ago. I was unable to make it, but I heard turnout was pretty good. Thank you to the Darien Police Department for, for showing up as well. Good community engagement event, along with Tri-State Fire that did show up as well, so thanks again, Jerry.
Good turnout, then.
Yeah.
Good support. Any other communications to share? Okay, well, let's move on to the mayor's report, and this evening, under item A, I have a motion to, to approve the reappointment of the members of the Environmental Concerns Committee, and those individuals are Jane Harmon, Debbie Hartke, Deb Hartke, Ellen Jakomic, Arletta Pecknick, and Christian Sont. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions? I think we have a re-energized Environmental Committee. I see, I see four, I see four members here, and I have a feeling it's, it's due to you, all of you individuals, but also to Lisa Clem, who is our liaison on, from City Hall, who has helped generate, and you did a great job on the recycling event, and I'm sure, I know our residents are asking for more, so thank you for all your service. With that, with that said, the roll, please.
MacIver.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Marquese.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The appointments have been approved. Would you, we have Deb Hartke, Ellen Jakomic, Arletta, Arletta Pecknick, and Christian Sont in the audience. Do you want to come forward to be sworn in? Do they have to be sworn in again? Okay. Okay. Well, she'll have to raise her, if she comes, she'll have to raise her right hand, too.
She's a future committee member.
You're, you're training him early, you're training her early.
Four years.
Okay, okay.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Environmental Committee according to the best of my ability.
There is nothing for you to sign because you're all reappointments, but I have your cards here. And then, Arletta, here you are. Jane? No, that's Deb. Deb, I'm sorry. And see, Ellen? And Chris?
She's not here, I don't see her. Thank you for service.
And we'd like to thank you.
Thank you. We'd like, yeah. Everybody, appreciate it. Deb, thank you. And thank you. Thank you for your service. She's going to help you, too. Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you.
How are you?
Always a pleasure, congrats.
Thanks so much.
This lady in church, I don't know.
How was, Alderman MacIver, how was your presentation with the committee?
She's coming back?
Yeah. Yeah.
Nice to meet you. I'm sorry, was he here? Alan, Alan.
Oh, we're going to have to make you that liaison, then.
That's the thing, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, do we have Republic Bank here?
They were just here for the admin committee.
Oh.
I should have come over there.
Okay, okay. Okay, so the next, the next item on the agenda is the city clerk's report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. How about the city administrator?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, well, let's move to the department head information. Does the police department, Chief Thomas, do you have a report for us?
No, but if you have any questions, I'll answer what I can.
The big events tomorrow night?
Big event.
Yes, National Night Out.
Public works.
Last year, a good event, a lot of people showing up, and hope they have the same event. Looks like maybe a little bit of rain, but we'll, we'll see how that works out.
Well, umbrellas work good, so.
Umbrellas are fun.
Yeah, yeah. It looks like you have a lot more vendors and things to showcase.
Yeah, I think a number of people stepped up to be a part of the event, which is very nice, so, yeah.
Good, good. Okay, thank you. Any questions for the, oh, yes.
Dan wanted a comment.
Pardon me?
Dan wanted a comment on National Night Out.
Yes, we're going to have a couple pieces of equipment out there, so the newer piece of equipment, please, yeah, bring, touch a truck. We'll also have the opportunity to give individuals an opportunity to go up in the air.
Up in the air?
That's, that's where I'm going to leave it at.
Oh, you've got, you've got the lift with you. Oh, wow.
That's where I'm going to leave it at, so.
Okay.
It's a little teaser.
A teaser, okay.
That goes forty feet up.
Shit. Is there anything in Municipal Services you want, you want to bring us update, up to date on our project on Plainfield Road?
The water main project is moving along. We're hoping, we're anticipating that within two and a half weeks, three weeks, weather pending, and everything will be complete there, so we'll be closing that up. The road program, we just updated the committee last week. The road program, we're in the process of completing that, just some patches left. Concrete, concrete curb and gutter throughout the main streets have all been completed. When I say main streets, road, roads that were in association with the road, with the road resurfacing. We'll be coming back in approximately three weeks to do neighborhood sidewalks, some miscellaneous curb, and some miscellaneous flat work, as we refer to it as. A lot of the ditches are getting to a point where they're completed. Three of the four ditches are completed. Clarin Hills Road is the most recent one that we're in the process of buttoning that up with side. We'll be starting a bigger project across the street here with the Devonshire subdivision.
Did you say that's just starting?
Clarendon Hills Road is the most recent one that we're in the process of, uh, buttoning that up with sod. Uh, we'll be starting a bigger project across the street here with, uh, the Devonshire subdivision.
Did you say that's just starting?
That we'll be starting.
Devonshire?
Yeah, it will be starting within, uh, probably two weeks. We have a, a pre-con on that, uh, field walkthrough next week. Uh, so, a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, projects are coming to fruition finally, and, um, I'm happy to report that the budget is, you know, within budget parameters, has been no surprises. Um, in the rear yard drainage projects, I think I did mention, I did mention last time that we're moving forward with an additional project, uh, because there's room in the budget for it.
Okay. You did identify which project you were gonna add?
Yes, that was the Tamarack, it was also the council, uh, agenda memo.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for, uh, department heads? Let's move to treasurer's report. Treasurer Cor.
Dan, thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 181907, the amount of $665,329.90 from listed funds, payroll for the period ended August 2nd, and the amount of $261,037.71 for a total to be approved of $926,367.61.
Any questions for the treasurer on that, on the warrant? Okay, then the roll, please. Oh, we didn't get it, we didn't get a, a second or a third, or a second, or a first, a first or a second or? Alderman Belzak, uh, seconded by Alderman Vaughn? Any questions for the treasurer? The roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Uh, the warrant's been approved. Uh, do you want to go over the expenditure reports?
Yeah, we have the revenue and expenditure reports. Uh, we're just getting caught up because our year end is April 30th, as you all know. Uh, the auditors completed their field work and just issued their, uh, preliminary draft of our financial statements, which we'll be presenting shortly, probably by September, October, uh, to the entire council, so, uh, based, these are marked preliminary in that they are based on the draft of the report, so, I mean, I don't anticipate any changes. But, uh, for the mayor's report, for the one month, uh, general fund, year-to-date, well, month-to-date revenue of $1,314,583, expenditures of $754,721, for a fund balance of $4,841,179. Water fund, month-to-date revenue of $1,233,24, expenditures of $118,282, for a balance of Motor fuel tax fund, month-to-date revenue of $51,025, expenditures $31,444, for current balance of $409,021. Water depreciation fund, revenue of $3,440,318, uh, which represents the proceeds from our bond issue, so, just, that is a big number going in there. Expenditures of $400 for a current balance of $3,123,961. Capital improvement fund, uh, revenue of $15,370, expenditures of $275,475, for a current balance of $5,861,941.
Any questions on this report for the treasurer? Then let's move to the June 30th report.
Okay, June 30th represents the two months for the fiscal year. Uh, general fund, uh, two-month revenue of $3,466,641, expenditures of $2,199,633, for a current balance of $5,548,325. Water fund, revenue of $2,409,83, expenditures of $669,216, for, uh, current balance of $3,200,492. Motor fuel tax fund, revenue of $98,081, expenditures of $64,526, for a current balance of $422,993. Water depreciation fund, revenue of $3,439,935, expenditures of $310,73, for current balance of $2,813,906. Capital improvement fund, revenue of $115,643, expenditures of $1,116,022, for a current balance of $5,121,667.
Any questions for the, the treasurer on this report? Okay, let's move on. Yeah, you want to talk about the pension fund and your meetings?
Also, wanted to update the, uh, city council. We did have the quarterly meeting with the police pension fund, uh, investment advisors, as well as the actuary, uh, the annual actuary, uh, last Thursday night. Uh, the actuary will be coming and making a formal presentation before the council, where we can get into a lot of detail in one of our September meetings. I just have to firm up the meeting when he'll be available, so we'll be presenting that, uh, shortly. Uh, that, other than that, the, uh, investment advisors, we have two investment advisors that both handle roughly approximately 13 million of the $26 million that we have in the police pension fund. Uh, the second quarter, second calendar quarter, represents the results as of April, May, and June. Now, we're on a fiscal year ending April 30th, so the April 30th numbers have already been reflected back to last year, where the investment performance did come in right at about our bogey, uh, bogey. We're looking at, uh, at returning about approximately 7%, and the investment return was about 6.99% last year, so it just couldn't come much closer. Uh, for these three months, though, the market's been a little bit toppy after January of this year. It's, uh, perked up again a little bit in July and August, which isn't reflected in these figures, but for the latest quarter, one investment advisor had, uh, an investment return of just over 1%, 107, and the other 1.38, so, nothing spectacular, but again, based on this time period and one month already reflected in last year, not too concerned with it yet, because I think things have improved, uh, a little bit, at least come, uh, July. Uh, part of the problem is 45% of the fund is invested in fixed income, and with rising rates, naturally, you'll get a better investment return, but the value of your investments decreases as those rates go up, so, once they stabilize, then you should be receiving a little higher investment return and not have the decrease in the value, so, looking forward to that when that happens. I mean, for the balance of the year, it looks like, uh, fixed income is, rates are, interest rates are going to be going up two more times, probably September and December, if everything you hear from the Fed is correct. So, I wouldn't anticipate in the short run much change in our fixed income, but if they take, uh, a slowdown a little bit next year, then we should get a little bit more balance in that.
They're expecting inflation?
Uh, inflation doesn't seem to be a problem right now. Uh, they've always anticipated 2%, 3%, actually, 2%, 3% inflation is probably actually pretty good, just makes everybody feel, uh, pretty good about themselves. Uh, if you start getting to 4%, 5%, 6%, then you may start running into some problems, but that's not really seen anywhere in the cards right now.
Any other questions for the treasurer? Then let's move on to the, um, standing committee reports. Do the chairman have any reports to, to give us? Alderman McIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a police committee scheduled for Monday, August 20th, at 6:00 PM, pending agenda items, and that meeting would take place in the police department training room across the parking lot.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, tonight, we approved the minutes of the June 25th, 2018, actually, they were approved, we gave them to the clerk tonight. Uh, and our next meeting is August 27th, 2018, 6:30 here in the council chambers.
And the administrator of finance, Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the minutes from the April 2nd, 2018 admin finance meeting were approved at tonight's admin finance meeting, and our next admin finance meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 4th, at 6:00 PM, in our upstairs meeting.
September, oh. Okay. Let's move to questions, comments, agenda-related. Uh, do any of the aldermen have? We did most of our discussion then, but?
Is it agenda-related or non-agenda?
This is agenda-related. Uh, does anyone in the audience want to address the council on agenda-related items?
Madam Mayor, if I may, since Dan brought it up, I guess it became an agenda item, and I want to say thank you to, uh, the city and to the municipal services for all the work that they're doing on, uh, Clarendon Hills Road, being a resident there. Uh, the city, uh, obviously takes the concerns of its residents very seriously, uh, when it, uh, addressed these problems over the years. Uh, and additionally, I want to say thank you, uh, for, uh, continuing the backyard drainage program, uh, because what you mentioned tonight, the project that you're, uh, working on over there on Tamarack, is actually in my father's backyard in my childhood home, and I could tell you, after 20 some-odd years of living there and watching water come up ankle-deep in that backyard, uh, in a rain just like we had today, uh, you know, multiply that over a couple of days, as we've seen, uh, plenty of times over the spring, uh, the base of the shed gets underwater and, and it's terrible. Uh, so, it truly shows that the city cares enough about, uh, the concerns of its residents, you know, when, uh, to have programs like these, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else want to address the council? Then let's move to old business, and there being no old business, we'll move right to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening. I'd like to read them into the record. Uh, the first is a motion to approve the September 7th, 8th, and 9th dates for the, uh, Darien Fest celebration and the road closures for Wendy's City Amusement along Clarendon Hills Road from Plainfield to 71st Street, and, uh, other, other various, uh, street closures that, uh, go along with Darien Fest, and, and finally, providing our police protection and public work services for Darien Fest, uh, as a, Darien Fest 2018, as per our attached agreement, uh, on being reimbursed, that is. Uh, the next item is a motion to grant a waiver of the $50 a day fee for the temporary liquor license for Darien Fest. Item C is a motion to approve an ordinance amending various sections of Title IV Building Regulations, Chapter 1, Darien Building Code of the Darien City Code. Those are just bringing all of our code, municipal codes up to, up to date, up to the 2015
Correct.
Uh, date level. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques? Seconded by Alderman Belzak? The roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
If someone is following the agenda, I failed to mention that item D under consent agenda was moved to new business as item C. Uh, now, let's move to new business. The first item on the, uh, under new business is a motion to approve an ordinance of the city of Darien, uh, ascertaining the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed on public works, uh, projects in the city, which is something we do annually. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman McIver, seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion? Then the roll, please.
McIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Uh, the motion has been approved. Item B is a motion to approve an ordinance approving a special use for an eating establishment at 801 Plainfield Road, Unit 12, which will be, uh, the VFW's new, uh, home location. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Marques? Discussion? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first off, I want to thank the, uh, VFW for your service and the depth of gratitude that, uh, we could never repay. Uh, I just want to mention that we do meet all the requirements from distances, from the church, from the schools, and, um, and we meet those requirements, but I just have concerns, uh, from a lot of residents that I received, uh, being so close to the, uh, schools, and also being located between sort of McDonald's and Baskin Robbins, sort of a friendly, uh, family-oriented place. I also actually ran into a gentleman who was hit in that area back in the 70s. I was jogging in Waterfall Glen, I just mentioned about, uh, the VFW, and that one of the childhood friends was hit at that intersection, so?
Which intersection are we talking about?
That's when you're coming through, um, the sidewalk coming across, uh, sidewalk from like Our Lady Peace, not across the street, but walking along, uh, 75th Street, so, along that avenue, so, where this, uh, VFW's moving into, you sort of have sidewalk on Plainfield, and you have a sidewalk on 75th Street.
Right.
So, someone coming through that intersection, didn't see him. So, that's the, that's a concern he brought up to me. This was like 20, 30 years ago. This is from a Willbrook resident, but this is something that was brought up to me. So, this is just, uh, it's a concern that was brought to me. My concern is that someone has one drink, you don't necessarily have to be drunk, one child not paying on a phone, and that's a concern I have. I'm fine with the VFW being, you know, anywhere else, but it's one location, I just have some concerns, so, that's, so.
Alderman McIver?
Does the, um, there's a Thai restaurant there, does that one have a liquor license?
The Thai restaurant?
It moved. Oh, but I mean?
Oh, different ones.
Yeah, there's another one.
That's on the, that's on the other side of the, of that, uh, it's in the, it's in the strip mall with the cleaners and, uh, the Baskin Robbins, yeah, I know where you mean.
Yeah, does that one have a liquor license?
Do they have, you know what? I'm pretty sure they do.
I want to say yes, but I'm not 100% sure. There's also a convenience store that has prepackaged liquor there as well, um, so.
They don't sell alcohol.
Thai?
Restaurant, I think you might be able to bring it in.
Thai?
Just like Chiba, you used to be able to bring it in.
Yeah, again, I?
Oh, okay.
But they don't sell it. Okay. That confirms that.
Interesting. I don't go to Thai restaurants, so.
Well, the, when, before the, um, sushi restaurant moved to Cass?
Chiba, yeah.
Yeah, they, you could bring it in there.
Yeah.
They didn't sell it, but you can bring your own.
Okay. And your point is?
No, I'm just curious if there's other, like, you know, area, or other establishments that?
Right there, in that area, okay.
That had liquor.
And we determined that, no, there is not?
Not another license.
That's correct. Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions on this, on this use? Okay, then the roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Clistic?
Nay.
McIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay, and one absent.
Uh, the motion has been approved. Let's move to, again, questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. No, we have another item.
You got your irrigation system.
You know what? I just got through saying we moved it to item C, and then I forgot about it. Uh, the next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Aqua Fiori for the purchase and installation of an irrigation system for the city of Darien for 1702 and 1710 Plainfield Road, in an amount not to exceed $11,950. We talked during the work session about increasing that number by, was it $250,000? Two?
Three thousand.
$2,500. Ooh, I'm getting, I'm throwing money all over the place.
Irrigate Darien.
Up to 15.
Right, it ends up?
Okay.
At the budget amount of?
I think, I think we're changing, I think we're changing the amount not to exceed, isn't that correct?
Yes.
We're, we're changing the amount not to exceed to 15,000.
Correct.
Which will allow you to get a, an estimate on, uh,
Be additional?
Doing some more, uh, irrigation in, in the green area behind the city hall here. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, you don't, okay. Nobody wants to do? All right. Alderman Belzak? Alderman Belzak and Alderman Vaughn? Seconded by Alderman Vaughn? Discussion? Now, I, I want to be clear. This is, this is, uh, this is an item that you're going to bring back and let us know what the, the amount is that will be?
No, what I was gonna do was, can, see if we have the opportunity to negotiate off the existing unit prices and not to exceed, uh, 2,500 or $33,000, basically, so if it's within that parameter and, uh, we can cover everything, staff, uh, city administrator or myself, we're gonna approve it then.
Okay.
If it's more than 15, we come back, so.
Okay, that's, that's the difference. Okay, alrighty. Okay, uh, we have a motion or a second or?
Yes.
Any discussion? Then the roll, please.